Okay, everybody, welcome to the joint, the meeting of the Joint Board of Selectmen and School Committee to talk about and hopefully make a decision on the ninth school site. And this has been a really long process going on probably for over three years culminating in this meeting. It hasn't been quite as linear as I would have liked when I signed up for this three years ago, three and a half years ago, but here we are and we're down to three finalists. And I think one thing is clear from Mr. Levy's presentations is that each site, we can build a great school on each of the three sites. And in this phase, we're just picking a site. And each site has, we've seen some examples, we've seen different schemes. The next phase would be feasibility. And in the feasibility phase, we would actually be selecting the site layout and starting, and start getting a picture of what the building would look like, what the programs would look like inside the building, the mitigation we would be doing to minimize the impact and make whatever site we choose a real asset in whatever neighborhood we put the building in. Each site has its pros and cons, and each site represents some level of compromise on our ideal characteristics of a school building. There's no perfect site, and if there was a perfect site, we would have found it, it wouldn't have taken this long. But here we are. And we've had a robust public process to date and input. We've received many letters, emails, and public input in the various forums and public hearings that we've had. We've received petitions for, regarding each of the three sites, of hundreds of signatures telling us why we shouldn't put the school on that site. And we've all read all of the petitions, we've read all of the emails, and take your comments very seriously. But in the end, we need a school, the kids are here, they need to be educated, they need a place to learn, and the time has come for us to make a decision. So tonight, we've asked our consultants to present some additional information, answering some questions requested by the boards, and that's going to be the first thing. And then we're going to be turning inward to some board discussion. And the boards have had some discussion in public, I think at the last meeting, we had some discussion, but we've never really had a full in-depth discussion. So this is going to be, I think, very interesting. And I've heard some say, oh, the fix is in for this site. I've heard people say the fix is in for each of the three sites, but I can assure you, the fix is not in. And if you were to ask me right now how, which site I think is going to be chosen, I would tell you honestly, I don't know. So this whole process, we're gonna, we're gonna figure that out. So the way, the way this is going to work, the site that gets a majority of both boards is going to be the site selected. So after the board discussion, there might be questions for staff during that discussion. Staff and consultants are here and available. And then we'll be taking motions and votes on the sites. So that's kind of the way the evening is going to be laid out. And one thing, I know everybody approaches this from their own perspective, you know, we all live in a neighborhood, but we all live in this town. I've used this prop on a number of occasions. And for those of you who've been coming to these meetings, you're probably tired of having me display the shirt, which in my mind conveys the spirit that I and the other members of the board, and this is Brookline Together, and that's the spirit that I and the other members of this board, we're looking at this as a town-wide issue, and we're going to be creating a town-wide asset.
Good, thank you Chairman Waschinsky. This is just an incredibly exciting moment. And I think it's worth pausing on that. We haven't built a school here in over 50 years. And the notion of a community coming together to build a school for children is just really important, especially as we watch the broken dialogue that we're watching at the national level. The notion that we have had so many residents, citizens who have come here together to discuss in 98% productive terms and 2% snarky, which is almost the flip of what it is at a national level, is just, it's an incredible privilege. And I think we all believe that we are privileged to be here. There's certainly many, many things that are going to come to pass after tonight, in the sense that we are going to have to put together building committees, we're gonna have to put together resident and neighborhood, you know, discussions about what it's gonna look like and feel like, where that's going to be. We're gonna put together redistricting processes, building and site design. So there are many, we're gonna, discussions about how to pay for it, that we're gonna come to town meeting and are gonna come to the voters ultimately. There are many, many more discussions to come, but this process has been so long in coming. I just don't want to let it go by too fast, 'cause it's very exciting. Now, if y'all don't vote on a site, I'm gonna be really angry, and we're not leaving this room until we do, because we actually need to keep going on this. The only other thing I'll say is that we are gonna build, just as Neil said, we are gonna build a great school here. We have incredibly talented staff, we have incredibly dedicated residents who've been here for a long time, and we have incredibly passionate people who are brand new, all of whom are gonna make sure it's a great site. And everyone up here is committed to making sure it's a great school. And every building has its challenges in terms of the buildings we already have now. There are traffic challenges in our buildings, there are all kinds of things going on, and yet, the educators in the classrooms, and the educational leaders, and the staff supporting them, and the taxpayers, all make them great. And so I'm nothing but confident that any of these three is gonna be a great school, because I don't think Brookline would let us, anyone, would let itself build anything less than a great school. So that's what's so exciting to me. There are a lot of thank yous, I'm gonna do them now while people are still paying attention. One is to Cara Bruton, who is an unheralded hero of this process. I don't know where she is, she's hiding, but we're all gonna clap for her. In its darkest moments, Cara put everyone in her backpack and carried us up the mountain to make this happen over the last year or so. So thank you Cara and her partner in crime for the last number of months, Ben Loomis, Mary Ellen Dunn, Ray Masick, who's our project manager from the building department, oh, there he is, he's back there. So just so many people, Alison Seinfeld's back here, and there are just so many people, in addition to the people sitting up at this table, who've made this happen. And so thank you. And thank you to all of our consultants, back from Susan Silberberg and Civic Moxie, through to Jonathan and Phil, Jonathan Levy Architects, and their teams. I just feel like Brookline is not an easy client, and so we are very grateful for your skills and your patience with us and your continued revisions. So thank you. And I would like to thank Neil, who has been an incredible partner in this process. The school committees don't build schools by themselves, selectmen don't build schools by themselves, it really does take a whole community. And the fact that these two boards have worked so well together over the last number of months has truly been, I think, unprecedented. I've only been here nearly, I've been here 20 years almost, and many people have been here longer than that, but it just, it seems unprecedented. So thank you Neil, thank you to all the selectmen who've been great partners in this. And so with that, we can, we can start.
So I guess I'll turn the podium over to Mr. Levy.
It's good to be here with you all again. I see many familiar faces in the audience as before. My role is very abbreviated, very limited, very limited tonight. I'm cleaning up a few gaps in our information and knowledge based on questions that have been received after the last presentation and from a variety of different sources. And they're very limited, let me go through them. So the first, some have asked about the idea of having two schools in close proximity to one another. And they asked me, well, is this, you know, how unusual is this? And I said, well, it's not that it's unusual, it's more or less ubiquitous. Towns and cities tend to collate schools because it conserves resources, and also because some towns and cities consider the adjacency of schools to be an advantage for the students. So we were asked to survey, and I can tell you, this is not a scientific survey, we just very briefly did a Google aerial flyover of Eastern Mass, and we looked at the many different occasions where schools happen to be in the same place. And I was just asked to bring some examples of those. I'm not gonna iterate all of them, this, these will be posted, but you can see that there are many of our neighbors. There are also, if we went further out, we'd find many more examples as we went further into the state. I'll focus on a couple of them. The one that I know the best is Weston, because that school system, we worked with them over five years to build their third school. They have three co-located elementary schools there. And Ben Loomis was kind enough to do a little additional research for me and discovered the kind of total populations of a variety of these sites. So there's 940 students on this site in Weston, where there are two, actually three, elementary schools. And working with the principal and the superintendent there over five years, at the risk of editorializing or just bringing you information, they consider it to be one of the key aspects of the excellence of their educational program in Weston. Similarly, in our direct neighbor, Newton, we, there are two examples of co-located schools, two different campuses. The first campus has Newton South on it, but also two middle schools. And there, there's a combined population of 3,500 students. And then their second educational campus, which also in some ways includes a private school, a very large private school next to it, has 1,700 students within close proximity to one another. And then finally, another one, and this, these are just being selected at random, we could go on, but I just wanted to give you some illustrations. In Lincoln, there is an elementary school and a middle school that are co-located. So what, the point here is that yes, are there opportunities in other towns and cities where, to bring schools together? And do the schools have unique identities? And the answer is yes, they have, they maintain their own distinct culture, their own unique identities, their own sense of warmth and welcome for their individual cohorts of students. The second item that I wanted to bring to you was clarifying that we've been trying to paint pictures with words with our traffic consultant. And I think we just needed to be a little bit more explicit for both committees to understand the traffic conditions, both existing and proposed, at the Baker and the Baldwin, Baker and the Baldwin site. At the Baker site, I'm gonna use the cursor here, this is Beverly Road, this north is to the top in this instance. Here's the existing Baker School. Well, unfortunately, I get feedback every time I start moving towards the mic. Let me, is that better? Okay, well, I'll be very careful to make sure it doesn't feedback. So the Beverly Road site, or Baker site, currently has congestion, this is the congestion that's being observed, this data is from our traffic engineer, we're just making it graphically more understandable. It's painted in Google red because there's congestion here, and the traffic just stops and doesn't move. So in both directions along Beverly Road currently, there is, you know, static traffic, both on the street and on the site. And the proposal to add another school here, indicated by this gray bar, and here's the existing school, would be to get all of that queuing off of Beverly Road, where it would move, albeit slowly, as the children are dropped off, and entirely free up Beverly Road. So we're just trying to make graphically clear what we believe the existing conditions are, and what the result would be of the new school. Turning to the Baldwin site, you can see the existing condition, which, here's Boylston or Route Nine to the north, here's Heath Street, here's the Baldwin School and the Sewell Recreation Site, here's Hammond Street and Heath Street. The existing congestion really amounts to between three and four light cycles along Heath Street, where the traffic is backing up past the existing Baldwin School site. On Hammond Street, it's perhaps four, five, or even six cycles backing up almost all the way to Pine Road. This is the existing condition, traffic congestion today. If we were to move forward with the new Baldwin School, without making any changes to the roadway system around the school, this is what the result would be. You would have traffic now almost doubling in terms of the number of light cycles backing up onto Heath Street. And the important takeaway here is that it would prevent parents from actually access, and buses from accessing the site, because there would be a gridlock at this location, you wouldn't be able to get to the school to drop off your kids. So in the intervening time since we last have been together, it was suggested, well, wouldn't there be a way, because, to use Woodland Road, and the answer, as a two-way street, for some distance, whether to Pine Road or further along, but even just to Pine Road, and then to make the locate, the curb cut access to the site, assuming cooperation with the Parks and Recreation Department to use this for drop, pickup and drop-off, move that curb cut to the intersection between Heath, Woodland, and Woodland. And the answer is yes, that would solve the problem. So the Baldwin site is feasible, providing that we're able to achieve two, to leap over two hurdles. One is the changing of the Woodland Road traffic pattern, and the second is the availability of the Parks and Recreation property for pickup and drop-off. So I, Neil, would you like me to take questions at this time? If there are any?
Any questions from the board, boards for Mr. Levy? Yeah. Ms. Stone?
Thank you Neil. I'm just curious whether or not the proposal that we're looking at for the Baldwin site has been run by Park and Rec, and whether or not we have any indication of their willingness to do what's proposed there.
Would staff care to respond to that? I don't think I'm the right person.
I've had some discussions with the Director of Parks and Open Space, and there are pieces, there are pieces of the proposal that might be easy, and then there are pieces of the proposal that might be less easy. What is less easy is, the closer you take, the closer you put the entrance onto Woodland Road, the less likely it would be that we could achieve that within a timeframe. If we bring the, if the entrance is on Heath, where the parking lot was envisioned, but closer to Woodland Road, not on Woodland Road, closer to Woodland Road, that's probably doable, and within, within the plan that was presented. What isn't in the plan, and we'd have to work out with Park and Rec, and have potential Article 97 proceedings, is if we wanted to have vehicular access between the parking lot and the Baldwin site. So what we could do is, is have the parking lot without vehicular access, and that's what was envisioned. But the key to making the plan that we saw work is Woodland Road. So trying to get traffic away from the Heath-Hammond intersection would be the goal, to make it work. So that's another piece of the puzzle. And that one, that one has to be vetted.
Neil, we did just bring an additional graphic, just building up on what you just said, that shows exactly what you were talking about. This being Heath Street, I'm sorry, I flipped you upside down now. This is Heath Street, and at the bottom here, this is Hammond, Route Nine's below here. But it shows the new parking area, probably, possibly structured, that the Parks and Recreation, we have discussed that with them, and the new drop-off loop. This loop could be accessed from a place further down onto Heath Street. So just to make it clear, and part of the deliberations with Parks and Recreation, for your information, is that they, they see this as an opportunity to improve their facility, possibly by enlarging the playfields, and of course, with the additional parking.
Right. The goal would be to create a win-win situation, where we would improve the recreation area and also improve the school site.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
I was actually out at the site this morning to observe the traffic, and I'm wondering whether the plans that the traffic engineer talked about included any improvements to the signalization at the corner of Heath and Hammond.
That's an excellent question. Let me, I'm gonna bring our traffic engineer, so that he can respond to that directly. Giles?
Good evening Giles, here with Vanessa Associates. If there was any simple fix there in terms of improving it, it would already have been done. It's really at capacity right now, and there really aren't any signal timing changes you could do to really improve that.
Well, one of the things we noticed was that the, as the traffic, from the, from the section on Hammond, from, from Boylston to Heath, there are certain number, only a certain number of cars that fit there. The other cars are prevented from going, following them because of the light. So as soon as those cars go through, then there's capacity on that piece of the road, but the cars can't access it because they're stuck at the light. So it just made us wonder as to whether or not there was a signal issue, and whether if you had a police officer there, or some other way of dealing with it, to, to wave the traffic on, so that that, you don't miss that capacity, in other words.
I think that situation's been reviewed by the town. Ultimately, the signal at Route Nine and Hammond Street, they're trying to process the Route Nine commuter traffic as a priority versus
No, I'm not talking about changing that signal, I'm talking about the one at the corner of Heath and Hammond, which is a town.
Right, but it's really controlled by the timing and how many cars you can get through at Route Nine, and that's limited because the priority is Route Nine traffic.
So it's purposely made that way? So that traffic backs up on Hammond as opposed to backing up on
Well, it backs up on, on both locations, but it's a state-controlled signal. And that timing's been reviewed many times. So capacity-wise, it's doing the best it can, but you have a really heavy volume on Route Nine as well as Hammond Street.
Right. And I guess one other question. Had you looked at the possibility of, if there were no parking from 7:30 till 9:00, you would have three lanes as opposed to the two lanes, would that make a difference?
That would be a marginal impact. It really wouldn't be a significant impact at all.
And one other question, if I can, just, your assumptions were for everybody driving and not most people being bussed to this location, is that correct?
I think we assumed a mix, we really assumed there was a mix of driving and bussing, but certainly mostly, mostly bussing, as is similar to the Baker site.
Mostly bussing?
Mostly driving, I'm sorry.
Driving, thank you.
So what you're saying is that Baldwin becomes feasible, or reasonable, if we can do the fix on Woodland Road, or something along those lines. Do we have time to do that? What would be the timeline for actually accomplishing that fix?
Yes, so that's one of the things we're here to discuss, risk, schedule risk and cost risk. I don't have a way of evaluating what the town process will entail to change a road, to a two-way road, or what will be involved in having the state legislature participate in the change of use for the Parks and Recreation land. So those are two hurdles. There are two hurdles that pose a schedule, schedule risk for this site. A third schedule risk for this site is the zoning issue, because this site is more heavily impacted by surrounding residential dwellings than the, than the Baker site, for example. So there would be more deliberation back and forth with the neighborhood in terms of zoning relief.
Ms. Dunn, would you like to talk about enrollment?
So I'll be here, and if you need any further questions answered for your deliberations.
So quickly, want to provide, the committees received, both committees received a report, sort of a, as a planning document to foreshadow future enrollment projections defining school boundaries. And also included in that, as a supplement to last year's enrollment projection, were some additional maps for where last year's students lived. With the enrollment projections, we should have a formal report, that will be an annual report published from the school department, from an enrollment working group, for a five-year, 10-year projection, using a methodology of a one-year, a five-year, and 10-year cohort survival rate. In addition, we'll be looking at the school boundary lines, that is part of school committee policy, to review those. And also to reiterate for the public, is that the setting of those boundary lines is a school committee policy process. It will be a transparent process that can take upwards to three years to actually come to some, some conclusions. And more information will be coming out regarding that once the site is selected, because we will need to begin that process quite quickly after the ninth school location is known. The enrollment maps, I want to provide to the committee, that were provided to the, both committees, just want to remind you that they show, they show changes where students lived between 2011, 2012 school year and last school year. They show how many students live in a current, current school boundary area, they, not where they go to school, but actually where they reside. They don't show, they don't make projections about the future enrollment growth. However, we did do a pre-K to three map However, we did do a pre-K to 3 map and a change to specifically look at that population because those students will be grade four through eight in the timeframe that a new school opens to see if that subset of our population is growing, of which the maps show us that they are. The maps do not include Medco or Materials Space students who are typically distributed evenly throughout the district. And they also don't show proposed housing development growth because we actually don't have those students in our records. And they don't include specialized programs or district-wide programs. So literally, we mapped every student based on where they currently live. One of the things the maps tell us is that growth is happening across the town. For example, since 2012, the combined pre-K 3 growth at Baker, Heath, and Runcle is the same as the combined pre-K 3 growth at Lawrence, Devotion, and Driscoll. The planned developments with the most significant anticipated impact on student enrollment seem to be in South Brookline. Our adjustment to our future enrollment growth shows we had planned, out of the 15-16 projection, planned 180 students to be coming from additional 40B developments. That's been revised and will include 312 students. 225 of those students are projected to come from developments out of South Brookline. I think the biggest message or the most consistent message these maps are showing is that no matter where we put a school, we will fill it. We have an enrollment growth that will sustain a new building, and we do need to redistribute the students that we currently have in our current population as well. With that, I open it up for any kind of questions that board or committee members have.
Any questions for Ms. Dunn? Okay, I'll ask one question of Superintendent Bott. If we were to have a second school on the adjacent to Baker, what would that look like from a district perspective?
So there's really two answers to that. I think any school that we open will be an incredible school. I think very personally, as a former principal and understanding and appreciating the incredible importance of school community and the uniqueness of school community, it would be absolutely critical to me and the entire team, leadership team of the district, that two schools on one site, in fact, remain two schools and not become, two schools, two schools with unique characteristics and not become a mega school, one mega school. Because pedagogically, instructionally, what we know about kids, that would not be the right outcome.
Okay. With that, I'd like to bring it back to the boards and begin our discussion of the school site. And I think that this phase of it, I'd like to kind of just go around, give each committee and board member an opportunity to kind of give us what your take is. You might say what's important to you, what you've heard, most important criteria, opinions on the site. If you wish, you can state a preference. And kind of, let's go. So who wants to go first? Or I can, I'll just go down the line. Mr. Glover.
Thank you. You know, I think to start, I want to reiterate what others have said in the sense that I do think wherever we choose to build a school, it will be a great school. And I think, and I think that while all of the sites are flawed, I think we're all committed to that goal, regardless of whether our preferred site is chosen. You know, about a third of the people in this room are likely going to be disappointed tonight based on what we've heard in the correspondence leading up to this. But as I've said, you know, similar to us who are going to get behind whatever choice is made, even if it's not our individual choice, I would like to encourage everyone in the room to also think about getting behind that school and helping us make it great. It is impossible to satisfy everyone, but that is the nature of our democracy in some ways. So with that, again, I just want to reiterate, I think getting behind whatever choice is made here tonight is extremely important. With that said, you know, I began my analysis by thinking about how the three potential sites correspond to where the need is in the town. And as has been indicated tonight, my analysis is very similar. I think it's clear that there is significant need in both North and South Brookline, such that citing a school at any of the sites would be reasonable from a need and a demographic or redistricting perspective. In North Brookline, there is clearly significant crowding in many of the schools, such that any number of schools could contribute students to a school at the Stop &amp; Shop site. The overcrowding in South Brookline, I think, is less obvious, but as Ms. Dunn indicated, it is real. There are 867 students currently living in the Baker district, a district with a school that was originally designed for 600. In addition, it would be reasonable to think that there are several hundred students in the adjacent districts to the Baker district that could reasonably be redistricted without a tremendous amount of heartache, although I know redistricting is inevitably going to cause some difficulty. But those students could be redistricted reasonably to either a South Brookline site. Sure. And of course, there is the prospect of several hundred more students being added to the Baker district as a result of the Hancock Village development. So again, all three sites are appropriate from a demographic perspective. But I think there are only two sites that allow for significant walkability, and those are the Stop &amp; Shop site and the Baker site. The Stop &amp; Shop site would allow for the most walkability of the choices, given the density of the surrounding area. The Baker site would have less walkability, but there would still be a significant amount of students who would be able to walk, just based on the fact that it's located in an established neighborhood and is so near the Hancock Village site. The Baldwin site, in my mind, is more challenged from a walkability perspective. It's further away from many of the neighborhoods in South Brookline, and I believe it would significantly limit walkability, its location, plus its requirement for some of the students to possibly cross Route 9 or other busy roads. That limitation on walkability, I think, makes the Baldwin site the least desirable of the sites in my mind. So I'm sort of left with the Stop &amp; Shop and the Baker site. I like the Stop &amp; Shop site from a locational perspective, but I do think it's problematic because of the complexity of developing that site, in particular, the need and desire to keep a supermarket at that site. I am very concerned that when faced with a choice of whether or not to invest substantial capital on that site for a new supermarket, that a supermarket operator might find that such an investment does not provide the type of return that is required by their shareholders and executives, given that this is a relatively small site for a modern-day supermarket. In addition, I think we can't underestimate how complicated and time-consuming such a joint development effort might be, and at the end of it all, we may not end up in a place that's really acceptable for us. So for me, this really only leaves the Baker site. In addition to allowing for significant walkability and the real need that is there in the area, I do believe that site is large enough to accommodate a second school while providing sufficient open space and also allowing for the schools to be separate and distinct communities, as Superintendent Bott indicated. In addition, as has been shown by the traffic engineers and the architects, I do believe that investment in the site can actually alleviate many of the traffic issues at the site by taking the traffic off of the surrounding streets and moving it on to the site. For all these reasons, I am supportive of the Baker site. However, if the site is selected, we need to, I think it's imperative that we continue to think about all of the concerns that have been raised by the community with respect to the site and make sure that we continue to try to adequately address those concerns throughout the process.
Thank you, Selectman Woschinski. Can everybody hear me? Great, thanks. No, you can't. I want to start by echoing just what Mr. Glover said to all of us here at the table and the community, that we need to support the final decision tonight, even if it is not our personal preference, because the need is very great. That has been well-established. And I am also confident that we will build a great elementary school, a ninth elementary school that will join a list of terrific places to be a student in Brookline. But I do have strong views about what we should do, so here goes on my thinking. I start by eliminating the Baldwin site, much like Mr. Glover. I've seen nothing in the demographic projections, including tonight, that alters what Selectman Woschinski, former Selectman Ken Goldstein, and I concluded in our B-Space Subcommittee, which is that Baldwin will have very few students living nearby. So it will not be a neighborhood school like our others, and the consequent redistricting may distort other elementary school boundaries. Second, as we heard tonight, accommodating a high volume of automobiles and buses on Baldwin's constrained site will require more than can be accomplished without at least some shared sacrifice of current site use by both the schools and by Parks and Rec. I am unconvinced that there is willingness across both to do so. The existence of nearby public transportation has been used as an advantage for Baldwin. I don't see it that way. I don't see public transportation as useful for five-to-10-year-olds, so I don't find that persuasive as a pro. On the other hand, I do believe Baldwin is an ideal location for expanding facilities for Brookline High School. Unlike young children, high schoolers do use public transportation, and Baldwin is serviced by the Green Line as well as the 60 bus from the north and the 51 bus from the south. Because high school students come from all over Brookline, Baldwin is an advantage because it is in an equitable midpoint for all of our students. Nearby Pine Manor has a performing arts center, a gymnasium, and a ball field just across Woodland Road, facilities that are appropriate for a high schooler and that could be rented from the college which needs the cash. The playing fields at Baldwin and Pine Manor together would provide needed space for a growing high school athletics program, one that is already starved for practice and playing fields near BHS. So choosing Baldwin for the elementary school means that we would eliminate our best option, in my view, for meeting the needs of a future 2,700-student high school population in order to build an elementary school in the least walkable site of the three. That is why I take it off the table. So for me, like Mr. Glover, it is between Baker and the Village site. There have been good and impassioned arguments for and against each, and I'm going to touch on just a few points. JLA showed us that each site could accommodate a school while also accommodating vehicle queuing for drop-off, and members of both communities remain adamant nevertheless that neighborhood traffic will be a nightmare. We have to recognize that a ninth school at either location will leave either end of the town that isn't served with existing and worsening overcrowding, as we've heard tonight from Ms. Dunn. Both sites present significant physical challenges. The Village site may require complicated engineering, mitigation of ground contaminants from past use. Eventual green and open play space will be accommodated on rooftops, something I know Selectwoman Daly finds unthinkable. But we built Skyline Park and playgrounds on top of a giant garbage dump, and everyone cheered. We also built a beautiful outdoor amphitheater at Pierce, used as a classroom as well as for recreation on the roof of the town's parking garage. Putting another school plus access roads for vehicle queuing at Baker would require clearing scores of mature-growth trees on a site that abuts a nature sanctuary. Let's remember that we're talking about putting two elementary schools on an 11-acre site at Baker that abuts a nature preserve, after rejecting putting one school on or near the 10-acre Amory Park site because it would take green space or cut down mature-growth trees and abutted a nature sanctuary. I believe we will need to build and expand at Baker. The numbers call out for it, but I don't believe we have to do so now, and we have viable options to do so in a more balanced way in the coming years. All of which brings me to the Village site and why it is my choice for a ninth school. The Village site is my neighborhood. I've lived there for almost 20 years. I experienced the traffic tie-ups on St. Paul and Aspen Wall, and I shop at the Stop &amp; Shop. This is a neighborhood I know and love. As the recent enrollment projections showed, the site is at the heart of our current enrollment needs. A new school there immediately draws off from three of our most crowded schools in the north end of town. An affordable full-service grocery must be maintained, but I also think Stop &amp; Shop customers, many of whom we know are elderly or low-income, deserve an improved store that does not flood after rainstorms and is an appealing place to shop, not just the cheapest option within walking distance. I see a public-private partnership with Stop &amp; Shop as the best chance we have as a town of keeping the store and getting improvements to it that would benefit everyone. Without that, I really fear that we will lose the store when the parcel's various owners inevitably decide to sell to our high-bidding developers who do not care about the neighborhood or about our overcrowded schools. The high price tag is a big concern, but taxpayer exposure for the cost of the site could be partially and maybe significantly offset by rental revenues if we negotiate a long-term lease deal with Stop &amp; Shop to operate there, according at least to Michael Sandmann's analysis. I agree with my town meeting colleagues from Precincts 3 and 7 and 10, who have written in support of this site, that it presents unique opportunities to create new public amenities, pedestrian-friendly spaces, even green buffers, and yes, appealing play spaces in what is now a neglected and gray concrete stretch of the neighborhood. So to improve vehicle access and queuing, true. It will affect some portion of parking lots for two condo buildings on St. Paul Street. I am not suggesting that compensating for displaced parking spaces is an easy problem to solve, but it is a solvable problem, and I would rather take parking spaces that might be replaceable than cut down scores of mature-growth trees. Finally, I know that this project could hit obstacles that extend the timeline. The grocery stores, Mr. Glover points out, needs to assess its return on investment. The takings and the engineering could be very, very difficult. But if this is a school building for the next 100 years, then I think we should not be afraid of taking longer to be able to invest in the site with the greatest potential for addressing Brookline's current and future needs as a town. Thank you for indulging me with your attention and extra time.
Thank you. Dr. Jackson.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay? Great. To begin, I am in support generally of any of these three sites for our ninth school, and I'm very excited to select one, and as Ms. Dickoff said earlier, go build an amazing school. It really is an exciting moment, and to be a part of the school committee with the Selectmen to make this decision is a real honor and a privilege. As others have also said, I will support whatever site is collectively selected. So to be clear, while I have a preference, I will join whichever direction we choose to go in. In making my decision, I, like my school committee colleagues, have weighed various pieces of data from staff, architects, and others, as well as a plethora of opinion. I also take seriously the charge of considering this choice with a long-term view, as some have said, a 50- to 100-year choice. So my focus has been on the possibility and the potential of each site, not the moment of a site. To that end, my bias is that a school is not just a building that holds students and teachers from 8:00 to 3:00 p.m. It is as much a part of a community as is a grocery store, a town hall, a park, a music school. And when done well, a school can serve as a hub or connector for a community, students learning and developing, leveraging resources not just in their building, but from that park, that grocery store, that police department, and students contributing to that community, volunteering at the senior center, growing a community garden with store owners, maintaining and caring for shared parks with family and friends. and caring for shared parks with family and friends. For this version of education, the community-school version of education, the Village Site, in my mind, is the best site. To be clear, like many, I do support fully the continued existence of a grocery store, and I believe that the complement of a school at that site is the best long-term choice we can make.
David Pollak, School Committee. Without repeating at great length what others have said, um, I'll just repeat a few things. I'm, uh, I'm very excited, and I've said this before, I'm very excited about the potential of each of these three sites. I think that the schematic designs that have been put in front of us offer a wealth of possibilities for excellent educational outcomes and for addressing community issues, um, at, at each site. And I would be thrilled to move forward with, uh, executing and building a school and opening a school on, on any of these three sites. I look forward to our vote and to, to forming a building committee and, and moving forward. I think that, um, each, it's very easy to start with the concerns and the, the flaws, as, as, as Mr. Glover said of each site, the challenges, uh, the risks. But I, I really just want to touch on the, the, um, exciting opportunities, the high-level opportunities that, that each site offers. I think that the, the Village Site in, has, um, it offers the opportunity of a, uh, incredible positive investment in our community and making, um, making a, a better environment in, um, in, in the Village. And I think that the redevelopment of, of existing, uh, land and, uh, worn-out facilities, worn-out buildings, and reinvesting for a, um, well-formed solution that addresses both the supermarket and the school needs in a place where, uh, we have a, a great need for additional school capacity makes that site really exciting and promising. I think that the Baldwin Site offers the opportunity to, it's a, it's a very large campus, um, about, I think, between Baldwin and the adjacent park, which, even though the Baldwin Site is 2.7 acres, when you bring the two together, it's, um, hang on a second Almost 12 and a half acres. And it's reasonable to talk about the combined land because that's how we look at the, the school facility with playgrounds at Lawrence, which is on a, the school is on a tiny site, but there's a large park adjacent at, um, at Pierce likewise. So the fields and recreation facilities, while utilized, we have, um, early education happening at Sewell Recreation, there's a lot of community use of those fields, I think there's a great promise for the community to, uh, to derive on an ongoing basis, on a daily basis, a greatly increased value from assets that are already in hand by locating a school at Baldwin. And I think that while I agree that, um, the fact that significantly fewer schoolchildren live near Baldwin and Sewell than near the other sites, which isn't the only consideration because it's, it's, if, uh, if we can acknowledge that there's a lot of schoolchildren that live near the Village Site and a lot of schoolchildren that live, and more who will live near the Baker Site, but if there, there weren't too many in each case, if the school was big enough, then it wouldn't make a greater walkable situation with having students live nearby because they would go to Baker, they would go to Pierce. But the fact is that we don't have enough seats at either of those locations. We don't have any seats at Baldwin, but there aren't 500 students that live anywhere near there. There's, there's 100 about. So that's a concern, but I think that in taking the very long view, there is some reason to embrace the idea that building an elementary school, we have eight already spread all the way across town, and we don't have an elementary school anywhere near that corner of town. And so while one can look specifically at where the children live today and their proximity to that location, there's a certain simple logic in sort of locating a school in a, in an emptiness, in an empty space over the long term, because one might imagine that locating, I mean, we have a community that strongly embraces our public schools, that adores our public schools, and our neighbors who live in that part of town may self-select for people who are more interested in private schools for their children because there's no public school near there. But if there were one, as those houses, those dwelling units change hands, they would become more attractive to families that choose the public schools. And that, among other reasons, uh, I think, give some pause to fixating too much on the present, on the present moment, snapshot of where, where, uh, where the students are because it will evolve over time. For the, for the Baker, the Beverly Road Site, I think that's an enormous asset, the, the 11 acres, 11 and a half, 11.4 acres of land that's in the school site, and the, the adjacent sanctuary, which we need to protect, but which is also a treasured asset for the town and for seventh and eighth grade science teachers, and, and, uh, it, it, just for sustainability and environmental education, is a teaching and learning asset. I think that, that it's, there's so much, uh, land there and so much anticipated demand that needs to be met, that being able to provide a neighborhood school to every family that lives in one of the denser parts of town, um, is a great promise, and it's, the, we have to take on faith or, uh, expectation that all of these additional dwelling units are going to be built at Hancock Village, because absent that, it doesn't make nearly as much sense. But if we assume that all of those dwelling units are going to be built there, I think that to provide a neigh, a neighborhood school within walking distance for all of those families and for all the families that live in the Baker neighborhood today is a huge value. So I'm excited about all of the schools, and I'm excited about wherever we end up tonight. And I don't really want to, uh, strongly advocate for any of the sites, but because, but I feel as if I need to say a little bit more. And partly I, I feel that because in my, in my professional expertise as a, as an architect who builds, who, I'm a town planner, consults to cities and towns on planning, uh, for situations like this, and I'm an architect who works for cities and towns designing public buildings, but not schools. And I've been through this process for an entire career, so I, I, I do feel as if I need to provide something of an opinion. And, and so what I will say, and it's not like this is news to anybody who's studied, um, the report of, uh, JLA, that there are significantly fewer delivery risks to, um, producing an excellent outcome, uh, for both the school and the neighborhood with the Baker I think we can make an, we can, we can see our way to an excellent outcome on each of the sites, but I think that the challenges and risks are lower to execution on the Baker Site.
Thank you. Ms. Stram.
So first, I won't belabor the point, but I just want to reiterate the sentiment that my colleagues have already shared, that I will get behind any of the sites if it's chosen, and I believe we can build a great school there. So just wanted to, uh, reiterate that point. For me, the, the lens for making the decision was to keep at the forefront the goals of what we are trying to accomplish and what the end outcome will be, and not to minimize the implementation risks and challenges that, that might come our way. We need to think about them quite seriously and, and plan for them quite carefully, but for me, I have the, the end in mind, and, and that really, um, drove my, my preferences. Um, and, and so, so first, um, I feel like the, the site needs to address the enrollment pressures by creating capacity to serve more students, and the need, as we've already seen, is in both north and south Brookline. Um, and as such, I've always viewed the decision of a ninth school site as, as a part of a package. I don't believe that this will be our last, our, our only and last step in addressing the enrollment, um, pressures that we have. And so any of these sites, I, I saw as, as, I needed to think about what was going to be our next step down the line to solve the, the full challenge that, that we face. Also to maintain our commitment to neighborhood K-HATE schools, and, and finally to, to keep the long-term in mind with an end vision of what kind of educational and community assets we will create or preserve by building a school on a given site. So with that, my conclusion was, was for me that Stop &amp; Shop was my first preference, and again, I say this as a preference because I would be willing to support any of the sites. Um, again, maintaining a grocery store on the site. And, and while we are experiencing significant enrollment pressures in both places, it is most urgently felt right now in North Brookline. So, so looking at this, again, from a package point of view, I feel like building in North Brookline needs to be our first step, with a second step potentially down the line, uh, an expansion at Baker or one other option, but building in North Brookline needs to be our first step, given where enrollment already exists. And it would also create great community assets, more green space and play space in this dense neighborhood, and, and I also agree with the, the idea that with the town as property owner of the site, we have a, we are more likely to be able to preserve the Stop &amp; Shop on the site than if it remains in private hands. Baldwin is my second preference for the ninth school site. Similar to what Mr. Pollak said, I, I see that there are incredible recreational assets at this site that are underutilized and, and could create great benefits for the school, and, and potentially the school could even enhance those recreational assets. And I also see it as being advantageous that it may be able to draw from both north and south Brookline in terms of dealing with the enrollment pressures. Finally, I, on, on the Baker Site, I view this as a future option for a smaller expansion, and the reason for that is twofold. One is with the neighborhood model, I don't think it is necessarily the best long-term choice to concentrate school assets in, in one site. And I, I saw, um, again, similar to Mr. Pollak, some, some real advantages to building a school in, in opens, in, in sort of the vacant space of, of Baldwin. And also, I value preserving the community and environmental asset of, of, um, the acreage of, of forest land. The, this, those are community assets that you don't easily get back once they're gone. Uh, and so an expansion of the site which would, um, preserve that, that forested land, it would be something that I would, uh, be more supportive of. Thank you.
Thank you. Selectman Daly.
Okay, thank you. I am not in favor of the, um, the Village Site because I think that the legal hurdles to acquiring that property are, um, perhaps, um, more significant than, than we have been discussing. And, um, I, you know, I've heard concerns from so many, many neighbors about how this would impact neighboring properties and the, so forth, so I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of that site. Between the other two, um, I prefer the Baldwin Site. Um, I don't like the, the putting a second school at the Baker Site because I feel like this is, um, I know we've been, we've been trying to look at various pieces of data, but to me, this is more a quality-of-life issue. 1,600 kids on that one site is, is a huge number of kids, and particularly where we have very young children, the kindergartners, first and second graders, trying to compete with so many kids on the playground, um, I think is, is very difficult and intimidating for young children. And, um, I, so I, I, you know, and I, my kids are grown now, but I wouldn't have been happy about sending them to this, this complex. I didn't have this whole list of other towns where they've done multiple schools on a single site, but I did know about a couple of them, and the ones I looked up all had, were on much, much larger sites than what we're talking about. So the, I, I, I think the Baldwin, it's true that there are traffic concerns in the area. We would have to, to try to work on alleviating some of those traffic concerns, and I would recommend it be probably a three-section school rather than a four-section, but I think that would be a beautiful school, and, and when it's done, and yes, the kid, some, some of the kids might have to ride a bus, probably more kids than at some of the other sites, but when they got there, they would be thrilled with what they had, given that the neighboring park resources as well as the school grounds itself. So I would vote in favor of the Baldwin.
Thank you. Selectman Franco.
Thank you very much. Um, I want to echo what my colleagues on the school committee have said about the need to support whichever of the options we select this evening. Uh, I think we are fully capable of, of building a high-class, uh, school up to Brookline standards regardless of what, which of the three options we select. As I think everybody, uh, in this room knows, I am in some ways the most recent addition to this process after my recusal for several, uh, months. Uh, and since rejoining the conversation just a few short weeks ago, uh, three issues have really stuck out of my mind, those being traffic, uh, the appropriateness of, of co-locating two schools on a, a, a single, uh, site, uh, and the likelihood of delivering a project on time. The Stop &amp; Shop Site, in, in my view, uh, is a, is a non-starter. Uh, there are many issues with the site that I think have been amply articulated over the past several weeks and months, uh, in the lead-up to tonight's conversation, and I won't belabor, uh, any of the, those points unnecessarily. Personally, I find the, the argument about the project's complexity the most compelling. Uh, the construction of a new school is complex in and of itself, and the Stop &amp; Shop Site adds, uh, a number of additional issues, um, that, that in my mind casts significant doubt on delivering a time, a, a project on time and without, uh, significant complications. The Baker Site, uh, like I think all of my colleagues, uh, on, on the two boards, um, presents some complexities around the, the co-locating of, of two schools. Uh, I too am concerned about 1,600 kids, uh, 1,600 students, I should say, on a constrained site. Uh, I am forced to go off of the, uh, the information that's presented to me, uh, and I note that in the, uh, the report that we received in anticipation for this evening, uh, there is a, a paragraph that says, "There's no credible evidence, uh, to, uh, support the fact that, uh, co-locating two schools would have a, a negative educational outcome." to support the fact that co-locating two schools would have a, a negative educational outcome." I also note that the, the benefit of the Baker site is that we control the site, and that presents some predictability in the process. On the, the Baldwin site, I too am concerned about the traffic implications. We heard this evening that in order to make the traffic work, we need to make significant changes to Woodland Road. And put simply, I am concerned about the Article 97 lift required to affect the access from Woodland Road. The Baldwin scheme seems to rely on coordination with the various towns and town boards and commissions, casting significant doubt, at least in my mind, about the timeline and the ability to deliver a project on time. And for those reasons, I would support the Baker site as my first preference.
Selectman Green?
Thank you. I'd like to start off by noting that that last couple of days was the birthday of Eleanor Roosevelt. And she said something that's very relevant to our discussion tonight. Do what you feel in your heart to be right, or you'll be criticized anyway. And really, that's what we're faced with. No matter what we choose, we're going to catch hell. Bring it on. You know, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an educator, not an architect. But, you know, I am pretty smart, or smart enough. And I've, I'm able to read the comments from all the people in the community who've sent many, many comments on, on their choices among these three schools. I'm, I'm relying on people who are architects, engineers, educators. And I'm basing my thinking on those pieces of information as well as my own knowledge of, of these issues. And based on that, I think we can say that we're kind of boxed into a corner with three very, very difficult options. One of which I'd like to say right off the top is unreasonably difficult and risky, and that's the Village site. Although I think that, looking long-term, the Village site may be something that we should pursue. But only once we're able to lay a foundation with, with agreements among the property owners, the stores, and address a number of other issues that will reduce the just unreasonable complexity and risk of that site. That's not something I think we can do right now, but maybe down the road we can. You know, based on, for example, the evaluation matrix which we've been using, the Baker site's really the only site that makes any sense. Now, the evaluation matrix is not perfect, and it's not the final word. But it is a starting point for our individual analyses along with other information. And, you know, based on that matrix, you know, Baker, you know, seems to come out on top. But Baldwin, you know, would also be a great choice for all the reasons that people have indicated. If we can make it work, meaning if we can get that access to the site from Woodland Road or somewhere along Keith Street. That's a huge, huge if. And I have not been convinced that that is something that can be accomplished within the timeframe that we have. Maybe like the Village School, down the road, we can make that work and, and use that school, which is a great site, to, to make an incredible school that would be a gem within our school district. Baker, you know, has a lot of problems. I think that, you know, it, it probably is the one that makes the most sense overall, but there are some huge problems there. And I don't think that I can support Baker as, as presented to us, except for maybe the so-called Scheme A, which is a smaller-profile, smaller school, or at least the profile of the school is smaller. Because I think that it's incredibly important that we not create what the community has characterized as the feeling of a mega-school. If, if we go with a Baker school, we have to both in terms of the physical construction as well as, you know, the programmatic elements of the school, ensure that it is not seen as just a wing of Baker. Because I think that makes it the type of mega-school that really is unacceptable. And I can't imagine, I'm not an educator, although I have served on a school board many years ago, but I can't imagine that such a so-called mega-school can, can have any, well, can be educationally viable in this community in particular. So, you know, I'm inclined, I'm leaning towards Baker as the only site that makes any sense. However, I'd like to suggest that maybe we should think about, think outside the three boxes that we've been put in. And maybe what we should be thinking about is more than one school, maybe two or three schools. And that may mean that we're stretching out this process, but maybe that's the only way that we can really have a success, a successful outcome. For example, the Baker school could be much smaller than it is now and be focused on a unique, you know, 21st century, high-tech, educational-type programming. Next to the Horse Sanctuary, a great opportunity to make environmental science the focus of that program for the little kids on through the eighth graders. You know, that's an idea that, that would, that would make sense to me and maybe would make sense at Baker with a smaller, much smaller footprint. I, I think I'd like to wrap up by saying, we've received a lot of emails, letters, and other communications from the community. And frankly, I've read them all. I've, I've, I've cut and pasted them into separate documents. I take them around with me and have been reviewing them to find out where the gems of wisdom are in, in all this, this correspondence. And there are some great gems, great pieces of information that, that, you know, that inform my thinking. There also are people who have suggested that unless they get their way, they won't support an override, or maybe they'll move out of the community, or whatever. I think it's very important, and other people have said this, I just want to emphasize it again, is whatever the selection that we make is, it's very important that the community feels that its views were not followed. Jump on the bandwagon with us to make that school an excellent school, a school we all can be proud of. And ensure that your concerns are addressed in the development of that school. Because if, if people take an adversarial position to this process, we'll both end up hurting and not getting what we can and should receive out of this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chang.
Good evening. Ben Chang, school committee member, 25-year resident with his son at BHS. I will be brief. My analysis is driven by the fact that we need a school open by September 2020. And to have any chance of doing so, we need to stick to our selection deadline, which is today. Because time is our biggest enemy, my decision is informed by the fact that the site we select should have the fewest impediments that is outside the control of the town and the school committee. In light of my decision-making priorities, I've found the 12 factors under the schedule and cost-risk factors in the decision-making matrix developed by JLA to be the, to hold the most sway in my decision. As many of my business colleagues will hear me say, quote, "The more cooks in the kitchen, the longer and more expensive it gets." With that in mind, I'm concluding that the Harvest Street Stop &amp; Shop would be the least desirable location for a ninth school. Thus, thus eliminating the Stop &amp; Shop location, like a number of my colleagues, I will support either the Baldwin or the Baker School. Let me digress a little bit and provide you with some of my, I'd like to express some of my own personal observations and commentary regarding the ninth school site selection process. Since the release of the Civic Marcy Report last October and the subsequent 17 public and open meetings, I have received at least a couple hundred emails, not including petitions signed by hundreds of community members in opposition to one site or the other. Frankly, I've lost count. However, during the past year, I do remember receiving three messages from members of the community offering their unconditional support for a ninth school site, wherever the site may be. All three expressed the fact that this is what Brookline schools need, and it is the right thing to do for the children of Brookline. After tonight, my hope is that, in the best tradition of Brookline democratic process, we all put aside our differences and really, and rally and work together as a community to ensure a ninth school is ready for our kids by September 2020.
Ms. Chorlebsky?
Hi. That's okay. I'm Helen Chorlebsky. I'm on the school committee and have been for a few years. I, I'm not going to repeat what everybody has said because I think you've all heard it. We will all support a school, we need a school, and as soon as possible. Those, those are, are clear goals that we all have. And this decision-making process is not easy. If not, the school would have been built already, as you all know. We, we needed it two years ago, not, not two years from now. That being said, I'm going to try and look at this in a little bit different light, some of it cost, which I think all of us as taxpayers, you as taxpayers, will, will need to, to foot the bill for this and for the high school. So we need to keep those things in mind. The high school will need to be expanded. In thinking that through, along with the, the issues of how long it will take to get to the new ninth school, I feel the Village site just won't happen. It, it will take too long and it's too complicated for a public entity to try and do. It might be possible with a private entity, but as a public entity, those things just seem to go on forever. So for that reason, as much as I would like a school in North Brookline, and I could think of other places that have already been mentioned, but have been taken off the table, I think that that's, that's not feasible. Today, because I was having difficulty trying to figure out what makes sense, I went and visited both the Baldwin site in the morning at 7:15 and stood there till about 8:30 just to feel the traffic. I also went and visited the Baker site and walked the entire perimeter of it. Not the wooded area, but, but the other parts that were walkable. I think with the Baker site, for me, sixteen hundred children on that site, taking a wonderful site that really services the 800 kids that are there, and putting another school there, doesn't make sense. I think it's just too many, too many bodies and not enough play space. So for me, that, that doesn't work. In looking at the Baldwin site, it is the least expensive site of all the sites. I agree that probably three sections would fit there easier, but that's something that in feasibility, we could figure that one out. I have great faith in the Board of Selectmen and the Parks and Rec Department collaborating with the schools to make that site work for everybody and work even better than it does today. Baldwin lies more central between the populations in the north and south. And no matter what we do, there will be some busing. And I think there probably would be more busing to Baldwin, which would help to mitigate some of the traffic issues there. The site is a beautiful site. It's, and in walking it today and seeing it, it's pristine. It's really beautiful and would make for a wonderful school there. Pine Manor might make for a better school, but that, we don't have on the table today. So for all those reasons, I, I do feel that the traffic can be mitigated. I look at Runcle School where, you know, streets have been made one-way for certain hours and two-way for other hours. There are many ways to, to mitigate traffic, to, to make it work better for everyone. So my, my vote will be for the Baldwin School.
Ms. Scato?
My name is Barbara Scato. I'm a member of the school committee. Finding a site for the ninth school has been a long and difficult process with much community participation. For the most part, though not entirely, the discourse has been civil, and those of us who have to make the decision are grateful for that. I like to think that Brookline is a community where everyone's viewpoint can be heard and respected. When the choice is made, everyone will support it. In making the choice for the site of the ninth school, there has been a great deal of disagreement. None of the three sites are ideal. All have significant issues which can be dealt with, but not necessarily overcome. The issue that has been repeatedly emphasized for all three sites is traffic congestion. As I see it, the traffic issues at all three sites are somewhat different. And regardless of what we do, none of them are going to go away completely. We can make changes that will alleviate some of the problems, but when we finish, traffic congestion at all of the sites will probably continue to exist. In my mind, this can't be the deciding factor in our choice. What then will be the deciding factor? I believe it has to be the students. On what site can we build a school that really works for children at the same time that it solves some aspect of our enrollment growth? Thinking along those lines, I am inclined to eliminate Baker. I believe we would be putting too many children in a space that is simply too small. I, if you consider the space as it exists now, and you mentally cut down the trees at the end of the site on Beverly Road, which is what will happen, you have a decent amount of land. But then you have to add a second 800-student school and a sizable parking lot or underground garage with the roads leading to it. Just imagine a beautiful sunny day. It's recess time. But wait, how do you schedule outdoor time, recess as well as gym classes, for 1,600 K to eighth-grade students in two different schools on one relatively small field? Just too many children on the site. Of course, we could do it, but does it work for the students? Not so well. What about Baldwin? It's a smaller site, but with lots of outdoor space. Clearly, this is a site that could work. A school has been here before, and today it houses a school program and the staff daycare. The drawback here is that only a few children live nearby. Of course, people say that this could change in the future if significant new housing is built in the area. But regardless, it would be a school where probably the majority of the children would be bused. I think it will be relatively easy for the architects to design a great school on this site. The outdoor space is, of course, outstanding. So Baldwin meets my criteria, building a school that really works for children at the same time that it solves some aspect of our enrollment growth. It could help alleviate the problems in both the north and south parts of town. But to build at Baldwin means that we will have to endure the cost of busing students year after year after year after year. And finally, there is the Star Market site. Stop &amp; Shop site, sorry about that. I have Star Market near me. I am not moved by the argument that we are losing an important resource. As far as the school committee and Board of Selectmen are concerned, the Star Market will stay and will be open during construction. Stop &amp; Shop, I'm sorry. I think we could build a very good school at that site that would take advantage of many opportunities in Coolidge Corner and address the needs of North Brookline for many years. I know some of you are concerned that it is too near the other North Brookline schools. But all of the schools in the northern part of town are very overcrowded. and a building on the Stop &amp; Shop site would go a long way towards solving the problem. But what about green space and playing areas? One possibility is a rooftop play area, a concept used successfully in many places. Also, if this site is chosen, the feasibility study would give us a better sense of other open space areas on the site. Perhaps, for example, a playground for the early grades, as we had right on Harvard Street at the devotion school. Clearly, this site also meets my criteria. This is a hard decision to make because we are trying to see into the future. I know that whatever decision we come to tonight will ultimately be supported by everyone in this group. And I hope that all of you in the audience will join us in supporting the decision that is made.
Selectmen, Helen.
Almost the last word. So this has been a very, very difficult process. I've gone back and forth many times. Just to give you a sense, I actually dreamed about this last night. I won't say it was a nightmare, but maybe pretty close. Because we are building something for many years, but we're also under a lot of constraints to do it in a reasonable time. Maybe 2020 is not as reasonable as some people would like, but, you know, we're stuck to that. And given that, I look at the, like others here, I want to first say I'll commit myself to whatever we collectively decide. I think it's important that we get together, we come together as a community recognizing that each one of the sites has its complexities and difficulties, and that no one site, it's not as if one site is more perfect than another. But I would eliminate Stop &amp; Shop at this point. It's a very attractive notion to have a mixed-use development. I like the notion that we could actually preserve the Stop &amp; Shop there for many more years. Who knows what will happen if it's left to its own devices and needs renovation, et cetera. But the complexities of dealing with so many different legal hurdles, with so many different owners of the parcels there, it's too complicated and too risky, in my view, for this particular moment in time. I don't necessarily eliminate it altogether for the future, but I do think for this round, we need to look toward the other sites. As between Baldwin and Baker, as I say, I have gone back and forth. And in fact, I have done two different site visits on two different days. I had gone to Baker and walked it with Chairman Woschinski. We went and looked at Baldwin, we walked that. You know, we've, and then this morning, I went back to Baldwin at the ungodly hour of 7:30 to look again at the traffic. And the traffic, I think there are possibilities for mitigation. We've heard a little bit about that from the traffic engineer. I would also like us to think outside the box about the traffic because the traffic there is difficult, as it is. And if we can do anything to improve it for that neighborhood, that would be a terrific thing. It's really, it's really not good. This morning, it actually wasn't too bad, especially at 7:30. And the 7:30 to 8 o'clock time was really not so bad. It's after eight, I think, that it gets more dicey. But again, I think my analysis is that the putting a second elementary school on a site where we already have one doesn't make as much sense to me as putting an elementary school in a different area of town, somewhat different area in town. I mean, it's in South Brookline, but they're quite a bit apart. We will have to have more busing, although we don't know that that's what's going to be for the future. If we do, we're going to have to have busing, no matter what we do for North Brookline. So Baldwin in that way makes much more sense. It's closer, it'll be easier to do it. So I come down to, and it's a beautiful site, as I think David Pollak was extolling its virtues. It's lovely, and it will be a lovely, lovely school. I think the issues around the complexity issues that are cited are substantially different from Stop &amp; Shop. Stop &amp; Shop, we would be negotiating and relying on many different owners and between the town and these different owners who have different interests. But the Baldwin site, really, it's within the town itself. And I believe that we will be able to negotiate successfully with Parks and Rec. I think they're excited about the idea of working with us. So I think that overall Baldwin makes more sense than Baker. Obviously, as I said, if it's the will of these bodies, that it be Baker, then I would get behind it. But I do think that it makes more sense now. Maybe, maybe more sense, and I agree with Beth Jackson Stram, who said that, you know, she would like to preserve Baker for an expansion, not eight hundred students, but an expansion, maybe a couple of hundred, and maybe put a somewhat smaller school at Baldwin. And that makes a lot of sense to me as well. So on balance, I'm at Baldwin for now. Thank you.
Ms. Wolf Tettkauf.
All right, this is so fascinating. This is like the, this is like reality TV. Because we can't, I mean, we can't deliberate outside of open session. So you actually, it's less scripted than reality TV. So I mean, I'm just, I'm here with my little scorecard. You all probably have scorecards too, and it's fascinating. Okay, so let me sort of say a couple of things that I don't care about, and then things I do care about. Couple of things I don't care about are traffic. Traffic is bad, and we live in Brookline, traffic is bad everywhere. If you look at our devotion site, we have a thousand children on the corner of Stedman and Harvard. Many of them walk, most of them walk, but that's a thousand kids. And if you've ever driven in Coolidge Corner at that time, it's a nightmare. We have children at Pierce School. We have children at, Runkel traffic is difficult. There's difficult traffic everywhere. So traffic for me is not interesting. It's something to get mitigated and dealt with for thirty to forty-five minutes a day. And if you don't like traffic, number one, don't live in Brookline, or number two, don't put a school where kids are because where kids are, there are families, and where families are, there are cars, and that's where traffic is. So I'm not interested in traffic. Though thank you very much for all the studies. We appreciate that, because everyone else cares about traffic. The second thing I don't really care about is detractors. I think we are at parity with these sites. Every site has two hundred-plus people who have signed some piece of paper saying they don't like it. So that's a wash for me. I am interested in supporters, meaning who supports a site, who's excited about a site. And certainly Baldwin has a lot of supporters. Stop &amp; Shop has fewer supporters than I would have thought, but some. Baker doesn't seem to have many supporters at all. The reason I'm surprised about Stop &amp; Shop is that we got a tremendous amount of pressure from the, what called itself the Smart Growth Coalition, to put Stop &amp; Shop into the mix. And that group seems to have sort of evaporated in this conversation. So I'm not quite sure what happened, but I was surprised at that. And I think the only other thing that I'm not particularly worried about, although I'm sure I'm going to get a lot of flack from this from everyone up here at the table, is timing. Meaning, if we're building a fifty-to-hundred-year school, I'm not particularly worried about a year's slippage in construction one way or the other, or a couple of years' slippage in construction if it's a significantly better site. Because I think we're just, we've done an amazing job. Our educational leaders have done an amazing job putting children in rental spaces and making them beautiful. Charlie Simmons takes any space we give him and paints it and makes it gorgeous. And our kids are getting great educations in modulars and rental spaces. And if that were the only barrier, I would sacrifice a year or two on construction for a significantly better fifty-to, a hundred-year answer. So that's one thing I don't care about. Here's what I care about, where's the need? I'm persuaded, like everyone else, that the need is both in North Brookline and in South Brookline. So that's a wash in my mind. The need in North Brookline is here now, that is true. The need in South Brookline and more in North Brookline from Forty Bs, the pipeline is established. I think what's not here, that's very important to me, and we'll see more data on this in the coming months, is the fact that there are also parts of town, and this isn't my expertise, which is why I want data on it, but there are parts of town where the ability to build by right within current zoning, there's a lot of exposure. What that means is if you have a single-family house and you could turn it into a two- or three-family house tomorrow within your current zoning, allowable zoning, that there's exposure to that. And it's my understanding that there's a fair amount of that around town. We can't assume that all of that's going to happen next month or next year, so we're not factoring it into our near-term projections. But just as we think about the town over a fifty-year timeframe, I just think it's really important to think about the zoning impacts as well. A second thing that, so need is a wash. I think pedagogy is really important to me. But I think for many of us, the pedagogy is a little bit of a, we're holding that constant across the sites. Meaning, I don't think any of us, with the exception of people who think that sixteen hundred on one site is a problem, I don't think anybody thinks that this eight-hundred-student building or whatever it is that we build will be significantly different wherever we build it. I think there are a lot of things, a lot of interesting conversations about concept schools and could we do other things with pedagogy? I think for the moment, for the ninth school conversation, that's not what we're talking about. For one important reason, just to catch people up who weren't part of this, there were robust discussions during the B-space process about whether we should be building a concept school that would draw from everywhere in town, and wouldn't that be a great solution, that improved education? And the, we, there was a bunch of research done, and the theory is that, it sounds great, but in order to be a cap, and it might improve education, so no question about that, but in order to be a capital solution, meaning a solution to our space problems, we would have to have the ability to assign children to that concept school from where we needed space in the buildings. And that somehow made it a lot less attractive because this wasn't so much a lottery or a draw or something that people were opting into. But basically, if they didn't opt in in the right places and the right spaces, we would have to assign them there because otherwise, we weren't solving a capital problem. So I think the notion of a concept school or a magnet school, or whatever you want to call it, could be pretty interesting. Maybe it's interesting for a tenth school, maybe it's interesting down the road. But for this ninth school, this does, it really does feel like we are in a neighborhood K-8 school. And so that gets me to kind of the next thing that I care a lot about, which is Brookline core values. Not only neighborhood K-8 schools and people who are interested in walkability, but also people who care a lot about maintaining economic diversity in our schools and other kinds of diversity. So I think that while we aren't doing redistricting until we do redistricting, it's important to note that there are some things that I at least wouldn't support. I think most of, almost all, if not all, of my school committee members wouldn't support. We wouldn't necessarily assign non-resident children all to one building in order to solve a capital problem. So the Metco program is a good example of that, where you wouldn't necessarily assign all Metco children to one building because in fact, the value is having Metco children in all of our buildings and increasing the racial diversity of our district. So there are some things that are, sound like good solutions, and there's been robust hundreds and hundreds of comments on the community board, which I appreciate, like couldn't we just do it this way or that way? We wouldn't move all of our special education district-wide programs into one building because inclusion into those buildings is important. So the reason I'm saying these things is that there are many, many considerations about how we, how we end up doing this that are incredibly important and take a lot of our time, but aren't actually part of this decision because any of these three sites, we would balance for economic diversity, we would balance for, to whatever extent we can control racial diversity and that sort of thing. So I just, I don't want anyone to walk away thinking, why did they spend an entire time talking about a ninth school and no pedagogy? And that's why. It's that those conversations happen in other places. And for this, again, with the, with the exception of sixteen hundred on one site, these are, it's sort of holding those pieces constant. I do worry a lot about affordability. And I worry about affordability specifically because we've had two overrides in 2015, and we're going to need, conservatively, three more. We'll need a debt exclusion for the ninth elementary school, which is what we're building now, or what we're talking about now. We'll need a debt exclusion for a high school project, which is, I mean, you can pick your number. Everyone has a different number between a hundred and two hundred million dollars that that's going to require. And we're going to need an operating override to pay for all of the teachers who are going to do the fabulous job of educating our children. And when we open these buildings, they will need principals and custodians and cafeteria support, all kinds of things. So I worry a lot about affordability for this site. Given that, the word transparency is an interesting word, but given that we will, things are coming down the road that I'm cognizant of. And this is a town-wide decision. This isn't just a school's decision as to how we think about affordability for our residents. And the last one's feasibility. So I guess, as I look at all of these, my first choice vote would be for Stop &amp; Shop as well. I was very excited to keep it on the table as part of this conversation, mostly because I believe a lot in upcycling current properties. I believe, I like that about the Lars site. Back when we were talking about the Lars sheds and upcycling those into a beautiful school. And I think the Stop &amp; Shop is so centrally located, and I believe in smart growth and that we could create a very environmentally friendly and also exciting opportunity for children and the community members in the way that Dr. Jackson was talking about, to interact. I think I might be the only person up here, but maybe not. There might be others who are, well, I shouldn't say that. Let me move on to a different topic. I don't believe that schoolchildren need to be kept away from older adults and vice versa. I think that part of the beauty of Brookline, especially North Brookline, but South Brookline as well, is that mixing. And I believe that, I don't, I don't believe that, I don't worry as much about people being on property and school security issues as I know other people do and with a lot of good reasons since school incidents, school shootings, school security issues. But I think in terms of, you know, figuring out how to have, you know, a place based on the roof feels secure to me, having wands and badges and whatnot. I feel like there are ways to deal with the security question. And I actually really like the integration with the community. I don't, I don't see that as a negative. I also completely agree that it's complicated and that it's more expensive, but that there could be pretty exciting visions for partnerships. And I guess the last thing in my mind about the Stop &amp; Shop site is that I worry a lot that if we pick a quote-unquote "easier" site now, a Baldwin or a Baker site, where we own the property and we control the property, that when we, we're still going to need a North Brookline site. And it's, that's going to be harder to build on. So there is this sort of if-not-now-when question for North Brookline, in my mind. Especially because we can, again, quote-unquote "expand" at Baker or Baldwin anytime because we control those properties. So I will leave all that there. And the reason I'm going to leave it there is that it's hard, but it's not unimaginable. That said, so far, we have four selectmen votes against the Stop &amp; Shop site. So I'm going to just go out on a limb and guess we're not going to get a majority. And if we need a majority of both boards, which I completely respect, I, you know, I appreciate that, and I'm guessing we're not going to get it. So I will move on very quickly to Baldwin and Baker because Neil is looking at his watch. So for Baldwin, I think the cost advantages are that we own it, and we don't have to buy it, and that it's in the lowest-cost range. I think in terms of support, there's a lot of constituent support for it. Again, there are detractors for all sites. In terms of partnerships and exciting partnerships, I think Mr. Pollak talked a lot about exciting partnerships you could have with REC, accessing new fields for Brookline schoolchildren after school in a part of town where Brookline public schoolchildren are not using quite as much as they potentially could. And I just think it's a great opportunity to partner with REC. Lots of risks go away, do it quickly, you know, et cetera. I do agree that there are fewer children that are walking to the school than the other two sites. But again, as I've noted on the community page a number of times, if anybody was watching, just because kids can't walk to the site or can walk to the site, doesn't actually tell you what's going to happen district-wide. So if you put eight hundred seats at Stop &amp; Shop, there will be children bussed in South Brookline. If you put more kids walking to the Stop &amp; Shop site because more live right there, there's tremendous growth right along that corridor. Same thing with Baker. More kids will walk to Baker, but you'd have to pull down to fill Baker. So I'm not persuaded, one way or the other, on walkability or busing or whatnot. Not because it's not important, it's hugely important, it's a design feature, but because we just don't know. So I just take that one off the table. And in terms of Baker, you know, obviously, we own it, middle-cost range, you know, of all the sites. It's an opportunity to right-size Baker now. Baker now isn't... Baker now isn't completely with its common spaces and whatnot, um, the right size. And frankly, if we don't do the Baker site, I think it's gonna be very hard to justify capital expenditure at Baker anytime soon, given the fact that we've got a ninth school project, a high school project, Pierce has not had a renovation, Driscoll has not had a renovation. I think we would have to do something at Baker, but I, it's just hard to imagine a, you know, really full-scale right-sizing, um, and beautiful renovation of Baker anytime soon. Um, not impossible. Um, I do think that the negatives of the three acres, or two-plus acres of, of woods are a negative to me. Um, I hate cutting down trees. Um, and again, I sort of, the only place that traffic became interesting to me was on this site, because I, I'm not a traffic expert. Everybody who drives thinks they're a traffic expert, I will just tell you I'm not. Um, and basically, I have to trust a traffic expert to say that queuing will help. So I, I, I don't have anything else to say on that. So, um, on the theory, I'm not gonna get my first site. Uh, I'm just, I will throw myself to, um, back to the, to the group and say, I would be delighted and excited to build a school at either Baldwin or Baker.
So I guess, um, last, and it's interesting, uh, listening to the group. Uh, each of us approaches it, uh, a little differently, and, uh, find it interesting, some of the different approaches with the school committee and the, versus the selectmen. Um, I'm not an educator, um, so like, uh, Selectman Green, I think it was, who made the point. Um, you know, I'm, I'm reliant on what some of the experts are telling me. And I'm assuming, and I'm taking, uh, Superintendent Bott at his word, that if, if we were to select Baker, uh, we're not creating a mega-school. Uh, growing up in New York City, as I did, you know, size, I guess, uh, doesn't scare me as much, uh, though I, I, I recognize, uh, you know, the, you know, it's, it's, it's been our tradition to have smaller schools, but our, each of our schools has been growing, and I don't, I don't know if we have any small schools anymore. But, you know, if, if we were to choose Baker, uh, we would be creating two schools with their own identity, and, uh, and, and, and it's not a mega-school. So, you know, I'm drawn to the concept of risk. Uh, uh, the, the Village site, um, is the riskiest to me. Uh, it has the, the highest apparent costs with the, uh, uh, least amount of cost certainty. Uh, though the costs, I, I will say, the costs in the, in, in the chart, even though they're on, on a gross level the highest, um, they, they could be and probably would be offset by, uh, some recoupment of economic value, uh, due to a, a partnership with, with the supermarket, probably, uh, Stop and Shop. That, that said, um, um, it, a- a- as others have said, it's the most complex, it has the most unknowns. Um, uh, so I, I, I don't think we can deliver that site. Uh, it, the, the, it's just, I, I, I don't think we can really predict when, when we could deliver that site. Uh, and, and yes, I, I find that site perhaps the, the, the most potentially exciting, the most transformative. It's certainly the most creative, it, 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 it would allow for some targeted redevelopment uh, for a section of Harvard Street that's not at, at its highest and best use. But despite all that, to, to me, Stop and Shop is, is off the table. Between, to me, Baldwin and Baker, I could support a, a school on either site, and I think we could build great schools on either site. Um, Baker has, uh, not Baker, Baldwin has a few more unknowns. Uh, I have no doubt that we could, uh, have a, uh, very successful partnership with, uh, Park and REC, uh, and, and create a win-win, an improvement of recreational, recreational facilities, uh, at Baldwin, and, uh, create, uh, uh, either through shared use, or through creation of, or protecting additional, uh, land around town. You know, we, we can, we can meet some of the Article ninety-seven challenges. Um, traffic, to me, is a little more interesting perhaps than to my, my colleague. Um, you know, I, I would be concerned that we could, uh, you know, the kids have to get to the site, uh, and if we, if, if we create a site that, uh, uh, kids can't get to on time, uh, you know, that, that, that's a problem. But I think there are a number of mitigation strategies, things like something simple, starting school a little earlier than here, than, than in other schools, 'cause we, we noticed that traffic, uh, you know, starts queuing, maybe closer to eight, so start, start school a little earlier, maybe that's, that's an answer. But, or, but the, the, the real answer, uh, on this site is, is trying to get the cars off of Heath Street, uh, earlier than, be- before, closer to Woodland Road. Uh, uh, so they get off before the site, so that they, they, they miss the queuing, and then to bring the cars out of the site in, in a way where they don't have to hit the Heath-Hammon intersection. And it's, it's not at all certain that, uh, we could achieve that, maybe we could, uh, maybe we can't. And there would have to be a, a process, uh, you know, changing the directions of streets is, there's, there's a public process, and, uh, uh, we would have to go through it. So, so to me, the, the Baldwin side carries a, a, a level of risk that, uh, 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 you know, maybe we can't get the, the best traffic solution, or maybe we can't get the traffic solution. Um, the Baker site, um, you know, I, 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 I've heard some of the concerns from the, uh, from, from folks in, in the Baker community, and, and, and as, as I said, uh, I'm, I'm, I, I'm not voting to create a mega-school. I'm, I'm voting to create two schools with distinct, uh, personalities, cultures. And I think it's perhaps the, 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 the best way to create, uh, 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 neighbor, to, to keep neighborhood schools in, in, in South Brookline. So, the, so a combination of the fact that I believe we're vo- I'm voting for the creation of two separate and distinct schools. I think the site is big enough when you look at, uh, open space per child, and I think scheduling of, you know, recess is, is a surmountable problem. It has the lowest, uh, uh, level of unknowns. Uh, and yes, we're, we would be cutting down, uh, uh, you know, trees, uh, you know, but we'd be cutting down some really beautiful trees at, uh, Baldwin. Um, so to me, the, the, I, my first choice would be the Baker site. Uh, second choice would be the Baldwin site, and I would, uh, be on board, uh, and work hard for either site. And, uh, for whatever site we pick, I would, I would want to, uh, and commit to work with the immediate community to, to mitigate as much as we can, uh, the impacts of, of the school. And, uh, in, in, in my experience, having a new school in your neighborhood, uh, is a plus. Uh, it raises property values generally, and it's, it's a good thing. So that's where I come in.
All right, well, I have the fun task of, uh, trying to now facilitate a conversation. Um, I haven't heard anyone say that we're not voting tonight, so we're, I'm gonna still go on that assumption. Um, one of the ground rules that we set was that it would need a majority, whatever the successful site was, would need a majority of each board. So, um, we can formalize this or not, but there are zero votes on the Board of Selectmen for Stop and Shop. So it seems that one thing we might want to do, given these, um, remarks, is to vote to take that off the table. Does anyone have a different idea? All right, so we have a motion to remove Stop and Shop from consideration, and you may vote against that, if you wish, um, but just recognize that, um, that we need, that we would need a majority of both boards to turn that down. All right, so, um, vote to remove it from consideration. Um, so do you wanna pull the selectmen?
Okay, uh, Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And Chair vote's aye.
All right, so I'm not sure we need to vote, because unless people want to. Do people want to register their vote? Oh, we do. All right. Well, hold on, I just need to get sense of my board. Do people want to have their vote registered for the record? Yes, okay. So if they vote to take it off the table, a no means it stays on the table. Um, Ms. Stram?
No.
Ms. Pollak?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
No.
Ms. Stone?
No.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
I'll vote no. Uh, Ms. Gatto?
No.
Ms. Charlofsky?
No, take it off.
Take it off is a yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Barbara, take it off as a yes? Take it off as a yes?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in that.
You're a no, you wanna leave it on?
Right.
Okay, Ms. Charlofsky?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
All right, so I wasn't counting.
I was counting.
Robin, how'd we do? Five-four? Was it five-four?
No.
All right, so it's five-four, not to take it off the table, so it is now on the record. Are we okay moving on?
But it's off the table.
It is off the table, or, or, does, it doesn't matter, the selectmen are out, so. Right, so the, the point was, are we taking this off the table? And for the, so the selectmen voted five-zero, let's take it off the table. The school committee voted for five, meaning the school committee didn't wanna take it off the table. But you need a majority of both boards, so it fails, it's off the table. Does anybody have anything else to say about this, or can we move on to the other two sites? Anyone wanting? Go ahead, hold on, Ms. Stone and then Selectman Green?
I stick by what I said earlier about supporting, um, the, the outcome of tonight's vote, but I do want it, the record to show that the Village site was the first choice of five members of the school committee. Um, and I think the, it's important that we had, that we show in the record that a majority of the school committee voted for the Village site as its first choice.
You got it.
It is so noted. Selectman Green?
And I'd like to just say that in the future, maybe the Village site will make sense when we can assure, uh, the community that, one, a grocery store remains there, and number two, all the other issues that make this a, in my opinion, unreasonably complex project have been addressed. So I don't, you know, it's not off the table permanently.
Yes, and as I will continue to say, nothing is off the table till we have a nice school and a high school in my mind, so this is all part of a larger conversation. All right, so we now have a Baldwin-Baker discussion. Um, we have, the, the, if you just look at the Baldwin and the Baker votes, that we had, for each site, we had four people put it as first, and five people put it as second. Um, taking out all the Stop and Shop people who had put, put things, um, first. So I think it makes sense to have a little bit more discussion about the two, unless people, because I think the next step will be to go down the line and have people just rank them one, two, and we'll see where we are. Um, are there any further discussion about Baldwin or Baker at this point? Given that some of you went first, or second, or third, and you have heard other arguments since then. But the next, the next thing we will do after this discussion, I think, is to have everyone rank them one, two, and we will see where each board is. Mr. Pollak?
Um, I just wanna make one point, um, from what I've heard in the discussion, which is that I think we should be careful not to fall into a false comparison between the two sites in the sense that the only thing I've heard talked about in terms of spoken by the boards, individuals in terms of numbers for the Baker site is sixteen hundred has been repeated, which is the number that was studied in the, um, in, in the, uh, uh, JLA study, which was to, to test-fit the sites for parking, for queuing, and for buildings with that number. That's, that's what they studied, but there's been no determination, final determination of, of the program. And, and because of the need in, the, the demand for seats in North Brookline and South Brookline, I'm, uh, wary of, even though we have this need for capacity of building, uh, at the highest number in either North Brookline, which we are not, no longer talking about tonight, or South Brookline, because of the amount of displacement, and that while, if we don't build that many, it may mean that we need to do another project sooner, we would be doing that other project probably in a way that would balance neighborhood schools better. So the false comparison I don't want us to fall into is that I did hear several people speak in favor of the idea that Baldwin might be good with a six-hundred-student school. And I just, uh, I, I feel that, um, that Baker might be good with a six-hundred-student school too. So if, if we're, I think that we need to consider whether we might end up, once we get into feasibility study and we look at the, um, all the parameters at either site, we're gonna figure out what the best project to do at that site is. How many early education classrooms, we want to and can accommodate on the site, a lot, you know, some more detailed programming, which we haven't done yet. If, if we really do feel that one of the advantages of the Baker site is that we could build a bigger school, new school there, and that's why, you know, sort of compared with Baldwin, but I don't think we should say, um, that we don't wanna build at Baker, because sixteen hundred is too many, when we would build that additional, a lesser number at Baldwin. And that would be good, because we could build that same lesser number at Baker, and we should consider, uh, whether it changes how we wanna, um, think about that site.
Dr. Jackson?
I just wanna clarify process. Um, you had said we would rank Baldwin and Baker, and it seems to me that if we're gonna do a process that is ranking, we should've ranked all three, and so I would prefer that we simply vote each of those separately at this point, as we voted Stop and Shop.
Okay, Selectman Green?
I, I think, I don't think we should take off the table what I heard a lot of people say, in one way or another, that, uh, maybe Baker should be much smaller than eight hundred students, and maybe Baldwin should be much smaller than eight hundred students, so that at Baldwin, we can possibly address with a smaller school some of the traffic issues. And if we sequence the school construction, Baker first, Baldwin second, maybe we have time to address the issues of traffic, um, at Woodland Road, at the Baker, at the Baldwin site. So I mean, if, if we're just voting, you know, yes or no, Baker or Baldwin, we, we end up with an eight-hundred-student school at either the sites, whereas maybe there's another option we should be looking at.
So, I might not have understood what you were saying, but I think that the no, you weren't suggesting that we would build a school at Baker and a school at Baldwin?
If, if that, if that makes sense, maybe that is what I'm suggesting. Because it doesn't look like eight hundred students at Baldwin right now is gonna work.
Right, so I think the point of Mr. Pollak's comment, but he might wanna clarify it, is that the, what I think his read was, was that the need is in North Brookline and in South Brookline. So two schools in South Brookline wouldn't necessarily get us there, but perhaps four sections in one part of town is less preferable than three sections, and then three sections somewhere else in the other side of town, something like that. But not two schools, I don't think you were suggesting two schools in South Brookline. But it was, but it, but it was potentially an endorsement for one, for the one school we are talking about to be a three-section school, if that's what makes most sense in feasibility. But David, you weren't suggesting taking a vote on But David, you weren't suggesting taking a vote on three versus four now, were you? Or were you suggesting that we should be open to that possibility, depending on what happens in feasibility?
I, 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 I think it would be, I don't think, I, I wasn't, I, I'm not suggesting that we vote on the capacity. I just was suggesting that we shouldn't be evaluating Baker only in terms of imagining six hundred students there, sixteen hundred students there. I mean, there's only seven hundred and fifty students at the Baker School today on October first of this year, so it's not even eight hundred. So, more than doubling that and being very concerned that that's way too many students at that site, and saying, well, Baldwin's better because we're only putting six hundred there. I was just saying, if we, if we add six hundred, if, if we sort of, we want to be looking at them in a kind of an equal basis, and then I was making my own comment that because I know there's a need in North Brookline and I don't want to necessarily build all of these seats in South Brookline to meet the North Brookline need and bus those children, even though we don't have a, uh, physical, so, you know, we don't have a capital project in North Brookline lined up, and it's going to be a long time before we can do that, because we will be building the high school first, I feel better about maybe continuing to use rentals at Pierce, for instance, and then, uh, and not necessarily building another eight-hundred-student capacity in South Brookline. So we, we, but my main point was this false comparison of sixteen hundred, you know, an, an, adding an eight-hundred-student school on Beverly Road is not acceptable because it's too much, when we could build a six-hundred-student school at Baldwin and maybe that's better. We should just be thinking, okay, if, if we're going to build a six, if we're going to consider building a six-hundred-student school today, then we could consider it on either site and let's evaluate the sites. But I would recommend that we leave the programmatic refinement to feasibility study, and we will have our enrollment projections, the, the new enrollment, uh, projection committee is working on that inform, we will have much more, much better information, plus we'll have all the better information coming out of a much more robust study. So, I, I would recommend we not refine the program today.
Ms. Charlofsky?
I, I would just like to remind everybody that at Baldwin, that for parents who don't have cars, there is public transportation, and Baker, there is virtually none to get there. So, to, to, remember to keep that in mind when, when you're thinking about the two options.
Other comments? I will note that, for whatever it's worth, they both had few negatives, meaning both of them, most of the negatives, I mean, Stop and Shop got all ones and threes. It was either your first choice or your third choice, but Stop and Shop didn't get any twos, nobody was neutral on Stop and Shop, apparently. Um, but the, the sprinkling in the middle of, um, of, of ones and twos, people seem to sort of focus on those other two sites. So any other thoughts on Baldwin versus Baker, especially for the people who felt strongly or didn't feel strongly and need a piece of information to influence them? Selectman Daly?
Good with your, your tricky microphone. Um, I, I, I just will say about, I feel like, while it's true Baldwin would need some busing, it is in a better location to alleviate some North Brookline problems, as well as South Brookline problems. Um, if, if, the Baker area does not have a whole extra eight hundred kids, or even probably a whole other six hundred kids, and, um, so some kids would have to be bussed there, and that's a long way, um, on the bus, and, and particularly for parents, you know, for, after evening activities, that your kid's in the school play, or you're coming to see the, the, them get an award or something like that. Baker is, is not convenient for, um, many parts of town, whereas Baldwin is, is better, I think, from that point of view.
Ms. Stone?
Um, I think I, is the only person up here, I believe, who took Baldwin off the table, so the only person who put it as a three. Um, I respectfully disagree with both of the comments that were just made. Um, the, the public transportation to, um, to Baldwin involves either the sixty-bus, um, which most parents with young children are not going to do to get their children to and from school. Public transportation mostly works when children take the transportation, not when the parents take them on the transportation. So, anyway, so that's just, I don't see that as an advantage, I said it before, I'll say it again. Um, and in terms of, um, relieving North Brookline, the way the buffer zones work right now, um, there is a very large buffer zone, uh, organized around Baker, Lincoln, and Heath, um, that would essentially, um, all go, um, down to Baker, um, if we, if we built there, which to me is a far better, um, solution for filling Baker in the interim while we're waiting for the extra kids who are going to show up there, um, than, um, the idea of busing a whole lot of kids, um, and shifting all of the North Brookline schools south, as we looked at when we first did these projections, um, which really does distort, um, where those schools are in terms of being in the center, which is where we want them to be in the center of their, um, their attendance areas. And so, for me, there is, if we are indeed, um, potentially talking about a smaller second school, and given what the superintendent has said about being able to keep, um, two schools separate and with their own communities, I think the Baker Site is far better, actually, than Baldwin, um, for what we're considering right now.
Um, I think when, uh, when Helen Charlofsky was talking about the transportation, she was referring, uh, public transportation, she was referring to, um, the D-line, which goes, uh, not very far from Baldwin, maybe a ten-minute walk at the most. Um, in fact, this morning, when we were on our site visit, we met a teacher who was coming on the D-line, got off the, at, at the train, uh, on Boylston Street, walked, did have to walk across Boylston Street, uh, and then around to, uh, the Winter Palace where he works. So, he does that every day, and he says it's, you know, it's very good. So, I think the, there is not only the bus, but there's also the train.
My point, my point about who takes the public transportation stands.
Just go ahead, what did you say? I don't think we, Rebecca, can you just say it into the microphone?
Sorry, I take the point about, I'm, I'm not saying that the public transportation isn't useful for adults, but most adults taking their kids to school are then going on to work, which is why they typically drive to our schools even now when they live close by. So, I'm just saying that for an adult or for an older child, public transportation works, but I don't see it as a tremendous option for relieving pressure, um, for parents taking their children to work, I mean, to school. That's just my perspective.
Mr. Glover?
I would, uh, I would agree with what Ms. Stone said, I mean, I think there are going to be very few parents who are going to be able to, to reasonably use public transportation to take their student to school, and then also use that public transportation to, to go to their place of employment. Um, I think things would have to line up in terms of the location of that family's house with the train or the bus so perfectly that it would be a really, really small amount, so I don't think the, and, and as others have said, students traveling alone, I don't think is, is going to happen. Um, so I don't think the public transportation is, is really a realistic option for getting to the, to the, uh, Baldwin Site.
Okay, so we'll take any final comments? So, then we will, um, unless there's an objection, the rating system seems to have fallen and, nobody seems like that, so we'll just vote. Yes? Sound okay? Alright. So, Selectman Shinsky, do you want to pull your board?
So I think the way we'll do this is, uh, we'll call each, uh, name and just say Baldwin or Baker, and then we'll do a tally, and, uh, we'll see where we land. See if we have a majority of both boards, if not, uh, we'll have a second ballot and see if we can get a majority of both boards. Okay. So, um, Selectman Daly?
Baldwin.
Selectman, uh, Franco?
Baker.
Selectman Heller?
Baldwin.
Selectman Green?
Baker.
Uh, Chair votes Baker.
Alright. Uh, Ms. Stram?
Baldwin.
Mr. Pollak?
Baker.
Dr. Jackson?
Baldwin.
Ms. Stone?
Baker.
Mr. Glover?
Baker.
Uh, Ms. Gatto?
Baldwin.
Mr. Charlofsky?
Baldwin.
Mr. Chang? Uh, and I will vote for Baldwin. So, do you all have a... We have a six-three, and you have a two-three. How long do you want to stay?
Maybe one question is...
Sure.
Is the, um, September two thousand twenty a hard date? And if we can go to two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, Baldwin may be a lot more feasible.
I'm not sure we heard from our experts that we needed to extend it by three years, did we?
Or, or one year, two years, I, whatever.
Well, a, a hard date is, in terms of, you know, putting children in rentals, putting children in modulators, it's, it's that sort of thing. So I think it, there, there is a des, strong desire to move them into permanent spaces quickly as possible, so that's, that is the impetus for this, and more are coming to fill the thing, the places that are currently being used as rentals and modulars. So I think there is a, a real pressure. Ms. Stram?
Also, not speaking for the full committee, obviously, but you did hear several members of the school committee tonight say that we were viewing the decision with the long-term in mind, and trying to pick the site which in the long run we felt would be the best site, without allowing short-run difficulties to get in the way of that decision. So I, I know that that's my sentiment, I heard a few others mention that as well.
Well, um, I said I would v, uh, support both Baldwin and, or Baker. Um, um, I, I do have a preference for Baker. I see difficulties with the Baldwin Site. Um, I'm concerned about, uh, getting the kids, the, the students in and out of, of the site, but I think there, there, there are strategies to mitigate that. Um, the strategies are, you know, are uncertain at this point, so there's a, there's a level of, uh, risk. Um, and, and, and there's a level of risk that we won't, uh, be able to, uh, surmount it, but, you know, I, I think we can. Um, I think we can build a, uh, a great school at Baldwin. Um, I am, I'm concerned about the lack of kids in the, uh, in the immediate circle of, of Baldwin, but, uh, I would be willing to change my vote to break the tie. Selectman Franco?
So Ms. Stone made a point, uh, after our initial comments, that a majority of the school committee had supported the Stop and Shop Site. Uh, I observed the same thing about the Baldwin Site. Uh, and, uh, the school committee, or, or in my view at least, uh, the stewards of the educational quality of the, uh, of the town school system, and their majority vote, their six-three vote, in favor of Baldwin is a meaningful distinction in, in my mind, uh, and I trust that they are, uh, living up to or acknowledge the, the educational quality of Baldwin is, is vastly superior to a potential Baker, uh, site. So I will, uh, shift my vote as well to Baldwin.
Okay, so...
In the interests of, um, unanimity, but also...
Selectman Green?
Factoring it, or, or taking into account what I hear from the school committee, that the September two thousand twenty date is not a hard date, Baldwin may work, because we have time to address the traffic problems and some of the other issues that, uh, our experts tell us make that school very disadvantageous. But we have time, more time than, than we thought we had, maybe that is, the risk is now an acceptable, uh, risk, and I'm willing to, uh, go with the rest of the board.
So, before you do that, I, I do want to just note that that was my statement, that was not the school committee's statement, and I'm not sure that was the superintendent's statement. So, do you want to say something about the chart that, I mean, just the, I mean, I think some of this depends on when kids come, so don't, let's not get too excited about pushing the date back, because, um, I don't, if we're, if we're not going with Stop and Shop, I'm not...
Well, the votes are already there.
Let me put it this way, if we're not going with Stop and Shop, I have no interest in pushing the date back. We are going full steam ahead. Yeah, we're, we're going full steam ahead. I think, I don't think there are any votes on the school committee to push the date back. No. Yeah, okay. So I don't want you to get too excited about that, Selectman Green, if that means something to your vote.
Well, I, I think that just the recognition that we may, that to solve the traffic problem, um, may require additional time, and that that is not something that is going to kill the project. And that, I'm willing to go along with it.
Alright then. So you have your vote. Does anybody on the school committee want to change their vote, or are we happy at six-three? Do we, can we at least by acclamation all say that we are excited to support the Baldwin School, which is where the majority of both boards are voting?
Absolutely.
Yes?
Yes.
Alright. Congratulations. Congratulations, Mr. Bott, you have a nine-school vote off of these two boards. Congratulations. Alright, lots of next steps, which we're not going to go through now, because, uh, we still have things on our agenda for some crazy reason. Um, but we don't have to have them if school committee members don't want to. Yeah, I'm seeing shaking heads. Alright, well, we have a meeting, uh, next week and the week after, so we can postpone the rest of our agenda. Um, in terms of next steps, Mr. Lummis, I'm sure we'll put them on the website, um, unless they're up, are they up? Oh, hold on. They might be up. Excellent, okay. October sixteenth, Board of Selectmen and School Committee Make Final Site Selection. November, um, that we will be establishing a school building committee, just so people know, we're going to model it on the MSBA structure, but because, uh, there's not going to be an MSBA process, um, that's going to go to the Building Commission on Tuesday and to the Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, it's already been approved by the school committee in terms of the structure of the building committee, um, and begin the feasibility study phase of the project. Um, right now, the, um, our building project manager, Ray Masek, um, is in the process of, um, working through the contracting process, uh, for the feasibility study partner, uh, duration five months, and then you can read the rest of it from here. Um, the next important piece, you guys want a sec?
Sorry.
So the next important piece is going to be the, um, after we get the feasibility study results, there will be, uh, the completion of the feasibility study, public presentations and hearings, um, next spring, and a robust discussion, I hope, at town meeting in May of two thousand seventeen, um, to begin the process of attaining funding for schematic design and construction, um, and, uh, and then it will proceed from there. So, thank you very much, everybody. I think, um, there are many, many exciting features of the site that has been chosen. Um, we are very grateful to the public who has been, um, through this process with us. This is representative democracy at its worst or best, depending on your definition, um, and, uh, and we're grateful for all of your participation. So thank you very much. Um, and, uh, and we're grateful for all of your participation. So thank you very much.